Good evening, everyone. We'll call this meeting to order. Terry, can you confirm we're in compliance with open meeting laws?
Yes, we are.
And if you could please call the roll.
Commissioner Nardine?
Here.
Commissioner Azur?
Here.
Commissioner Vega?
Here.
Commissioner Clements?
Here.
Commissioner Farrar?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Lyons?
Here.
Those who are willing and able, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It's time out here on motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
Second?
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. We only have one item on our agenda tonight, and that is a referendum work session. As all of you are aware, our deadline for a referendum question for the fall is August 31st. Our work session tonight is hopefully to get us set up to be able to bring a proposed question and vote at our next meeting on August 15th. You know, if we need more work sessions, you know, in the meantime, that's fine, but this is our goal for the evening. At this time, I'll turn it over to Abby and to Commissioner Lyons to kind of lead the discussion, but then I'm hopeful it'll just be an open discussion and we can try to come to some kind of consensus for the referendum committee at least to work on and get ready for the 15th. Go ahead, Abby.
So, goals for the work session tonight are what district needs have been identified? What did the survey tell us? What has the referendum committee explored? Some sample questions, and then consensus amongst the board on date, amount, and number of questions. So going right into district needs, we learned from our facility study that we presented in December that our facility needs for the next 10 years are around 127 million. We know that South Middle School was postponed from the 2016 referendum, and we have demo and trends recommendations, and we also have some operational needs. Things to consider with the operational needs are the ESSR funding that will expire in September of 2024, and then we also don't know what the state outcome, what the state budget outcome is going to be, and if there will be additional funds for schooling in the next millennium budget. When we look at district needs and some of the demo and trends data, I know that this was presented to the board on a couple of occasions, and we were looking for which schools have the needs for enrollment. And so, big picture, if you look at the red, so we have 17, 18 data, 18, 19 data, 19, 20, 21, 22, and then we have our projections for 22, 23, what we're currently seeing in the Old Cliffs School District based upon enrollment, and then we have our APL projections for the next 10 years. So if you look at the 22, 23 ECSD, you can see we have two schools in the red. That's Putnam Heights and North High. And we've turned this world, schools to red when their capacity projections are going to exceed 90%. We know that that has an impact on learning environments if we have to get more kids in a classroom or if we don't have as many classrooms. You can see in 17, 18, we had more schools in the red, 18, 19, we had some, and then obviously, the couple of years of COVID did impact that. And so you'll remember that two of the schools that had recommendations from demo and trends were Putnam and North, and those will be part of what we're being, what we're discussing tonight as far as the references. The other question that, another school that we've been looking at was Meadowview, and we know that Meadowview was on our list as well. They had been projected to be in the red, but now we've had some changes. The question about Meadowview is the annexation in the town of Washington, and how will that impact our current projections going forward? And we don't know that yet. So that's just a question that we need to keep in mind on behalf of the school district. Just another way to look at the data, the 22, 23 enrollment, the applied population lab versus our projections. Again, you're going to see those two schools, the Putnam Heights and North High School. When we look at APL, there was a couple of other schools in orange that we were going to be concerned about adding Memorial to that list, and obviously, Putnam was still on that list. We also have a couple of schools that are under where we would expect them to be, and they're highlighted in the green. And so you can see that Locust Lane and Longfellow were two, and as well as North Star Middle School were three in the green, and again, kind of falling outside of what the demo and trends goals are for what we want to be operating at capacity and how those compare to what we're seeing in the current projections for 22, 23. I want to remind you, these are projections because we won't know what 22, 23 looks like until that third Friday in September when we actually count our students. But that's just what we're seeing in the data right now. If we move forward onto the survey, one of the things that is important to remember, remember is that there's multiple points in the survey that our constituents are asked questions, and there's things that mean different things. So the first question that was asked on behalf of the school district was to gain how much support is there initially for exceeding the revenue cap? And so the first questions, if you were, happen to be so lucky as to take the form out of the survey, was the first question was to get an understanding and find out what's the initial support level for exceeding the revenue cap? So we asked our, our community, we would raise property taxes by $7.5 million for the next 20 years. How, how in favor, how likely are you to support that or not support that? We knew that based upon that result, the initial report was 55.1% of the people that surveyed were confident and understood that it would be supportive of a school district question to take $7.5 million for 20 years and exceed the revenue cap. This gives us a baseline, gives this, you know, Baker Tilly and their team an opportunity to look at and get a feel for what a respondent to the survey know with very little information other than, you know, the school district is taking help asking for this. Then they ask in a little bit of a different way after that first initial support, they give the constituent some information about what the school district is considering. And so then they ask them about more informed support. So now that you've heard more information about how the money would be used, would you favor or oppose our proposal to raise an additional $7.5 million above the revenue cap for 20 years? After this information about the referendum was provided, that the support increased to 55.5%. So there wasn't a big change from little, little support or little information to more informed. And so really, what Baker Tilly told us is that this doesn't take into consideration how much money is it going to cost me? Yep, I'm supportive of $7.5 million, but you aren't telling me how much it's going to cost me yet. So then that's where the third benchmark comes in. Before we do that, again, there was little change in the first question, the first benchmark and the second benchmark and how our respondents answered after getting a little bit more information. And the third question, the third benchmark, was really to say, okay, if we ask you specific amounts, what will you support? What will you financially be willing to comment to? So on this graph, you can see that we asked for three specific numbers of the tax impacts to the people responding to the survey. So we asked if people would be supportive of $80 on a $200,000 home. You can see that green dot is 57.7% in that $80 of increased taxes on a $200,000 home. When we asked about 140, that number dropped to 37.6%. And when we asked about $200, that dropped to 26.4%. And so that was the basis that Baker Tilly gave us on the recommendation for here's, here's the amount you want to target based upon the survey results and the information that they accepted from us. So after that survey meeting and after some of the referendum committee conversations, we, well, I was asked to provide, what does that look like as far as tax tolerance? How much does the survey tell us? How much money does that give us? And then how much debt and projects can we do? So we started with 80 cents because that was the recommendation of Baker Tilly, and that again is about 58% support. That would give us about $4.3 million per year, and we would be able to do about $50 million in projects and be able to structure our debt payments in that amount for 20 years. And that would give us about $400,000 towards operational needs. When we raise the bar a little bit and go to 85 cents, which is still within the margin of error of the survey, the tax tolerance drops a little bit to about 56%. We gain about $300,000, but the debt that we'd be able to issue and finance for 20 years still stays about that $50 million projects. And we do get a little bit more of operational funds at that point. 8 cents is within the margin of error, and then that's tolerance level drops to 54%. It gets us about 4.75 million. And we can do 50 million in projects and gains us about $870,000 in operational funds. The rest, the other four amounts that we've got provided there were items that were asked in the referendum committee, and so we started them because we wanted to make sure that it's very clear that that was above the margin of error based upon the survey. So if we looked at a dollar, again, you still have about 51% support. It gets us about $5.5 million. We can do about $50 million in projects, and that'll get us about 1.5 million in operational expenses. We go to a dollar eight, that tax tolerance goes out to 48%. That would get us about $6 million a year. We could do about 92 million worth of projects, and it gets us about $2 million in operations. A dollar 38 provides that 7.5 million, which is, you know, that initial question, if we wanted to do 7.5 million for 20 years, we could do about 75 million in projects, and we'd get about 1.68 million for operations. And then the last one that we looked at was, the, the ask was, what does it look like to get $9 million? How much would that cost in taxes? And that's a dollar 67 on a $200,000 home. We could do about 100 million in projects, and it gets us about 1.2 million for operational costs. So the other thing that, you know, this does, that these options are looking at an operational question that allows us to issue debt, which is very similar to what we did in 2016. This does not look at just 100% capital question or 100% operational question. So, we want to dig into the projects that we have kind of looked at. So Putnam Heights is the first one on the list, and you can see in the key on the bottom right-hand side, you can see a blue box, you can see a blue, a green box, and a purple and a blue.
Green and a blue box.
Three options that we were looking at was a $50 million option. What could we get? What projects could we do with 50? What can we do with 70? And what can we do with 90? Those were the things that we really focused on. So Putnam Heights, you only see blue, and that's because Putnam Heights was launched in the 2011 referendum, and so we were able to do and get some of those items that would likely be on the list today. We did them in 2011. So the cost of the classroom addition that Putnam Heights needs for their enrollment capacity concerns is the same in all three of the plans. And so that's about a $7 million project, and it stays $7 million in each option because what Putnam Heights needs is really classroom space. And so the blue boxes is where the proposed addition would be at when we would consider Putnam Heights. We did include just what the differences would be in the 50, the 70, and the 90 million plan. Come up, again, for Putnam Heights, it's the same. It's about $7 million for each plan because of the work that was done in the 2011 referendum. It's not the same for the other schools that we're looking at. And then we looked at Memorial High School because based upon the last work session, we heard the board say that they would like to consider both. If we're going to touch one high school, let's touch both high schools because we know our high schools are stable in our community. People come from out of town. They're many times going to the high schools for either an athletic event, a co-curricular event, music events. And so, you know, we know that all students eventually end up in high school. And so, is there an option to do something on both? We know that Northeast is capacity, but is there some things that Memorial needs as well? So in our proposals, in the three that we looked at, in the lowest option, and there's roofing that needs to be done. There's about a quarter of a roof that needs to be done to the price tag of about $3 million. So we have, we've talked a lot about that because, again, you know, because of the way things have been financially, you can't do a whole roof at once. You've had to do bits and sections. So this piece that's included in the base plan is to finish out that roof, and then that way, all of the roof at Memorial will be under warranty again. You can see the green on Memorial is adding to some cafeteria space and extending that cafeteria space. Now, it wouldn't be used just for cafeteria. There would be a flexibility to use it for additional instructional space when it's not being used during lunchtime. The purple is the most important piece, though, to hit that goal of, you know, looking at places that our community and people that come in to see as the auditorium. The auditorium is very out of date. It needs a lot of work in order to kind of get it back up to par and where we want it to be. So when we were looking at the potential projects, we thought that made sense because it would hit something that our community would see, that our students would use as well, and kind of hit that whole curricular aspect. So that's why you see that show up on the purple. The price tag for the memorial options range from 7.8 million up to 21 million. And again, the biggest difference in the 21 million is that the auditorium upgrade occurs there. And then the other piece that's in the larger plan, and you'll see this at Martha as well, is looking at the co-curricular facilities and looking at adding turf to Memorial so that way then they would be able to have some of their adversity competitions right on their home field, and they wouldn't need to go to a comparison park. One of the things that our committee talked about is that we know in the Big Rivers Conference and even a lot of the schools around us that aren't in Big Rivers Conference, they already have those upgraded athletic facilities, and turf is a very common thing. So that was one of the things that we proposed in that higher. Then we looked at North. I know there are whole different versions of North High School. We know that there's a need for classroom space. It's kind of priority number one for North High School. And so the blue, again, is gaining about six classrooms for North High School. It's, it's okay, but really, we need the green because that provides more classroom space. And so then you see in the green, you see two more classrooms on the far right-hand side. And then you see some remodeling in the art areas. The little purple squares are for skylights and be able to provide more natural light. And then the other thing that you see in the purple there is redoing and adding on to more of an athletic entrance. Again, touching the extra curriculars, direct entrance into the band room and the choir room, as well as a gymnasium there. And then with that proposed relocation, and then that would create some additional forum space, larger group space for presentations, as well as a maker space, which has been very common as a need for space in our high schools as well. With the differences in the three plans that we looked at for North, you can see that yellow highlight is even though we get classroom space in the, in the blue level, we really do need to adjust the common space because as we have added our students, we don't have as much space to feed kids lunch. And so we need, that's why it's highlighted yellow because we could make that fit in the lowest plan. And so that's a difference, big difference between the two higher-end options. And then again, that last option, you're going to see where that turf field comes into play as well. Then we get into South Middle School. South Middle School is the biggest project in all of the plans because South Middle School needs what we did to DeLong in 2011. So for those of you that were in the community in 2011, DeLong had an overhaul, I would call it. We needed to update a lot of the mechanical systems, and then we needed to remodel the space. And we had talked at that time, we would need to do the same thing to South about 10 years down the road because South is 10 years younger than DeLong. So you're kind of prepping our community at that point in time that this would be happening. So the blue on the left-hand side, the blue is kind of the design of what DeLong looks like now after the remodel. And so the green classroom addition on the left-hand side is really to try to mirror what it looks like at DeLong. We're trying to make sure that our schools are more similar in first place than more different. And so in the bottom section in the blue, there would be touches to the science space. The science rooms are underized right now for curriculum and adequate space. So that's why you see a science addition in the green. And then you also see the blue because we need to reduce some of that space. And then in the green on this one, there's also some residue of the administrative offices, and then the weight room and the fitness room, as well as South does not have a wrestling room for our students to practice in. And so the other complicated thing about South is it's two levels. So this is just the first level. And in that sixth grade ring, which is on the left-hand side of the classroom space, it's a little more complicated because they don't have natural light in that ring currently. So that's also part of this plan that's being proposed in all three of them because we need to get that natural light as well. And when we go to level two, again, you're going to see that same kind of space for the seventh grade house and the eighth grade house. On the media center, the purple again would be skylights and bringing some natural light into there. And then the purple there would remodel art spaces and then look to get some breakout spaces, and then some more classroom space in the blue that you see there. The other thing that's on the far right-hand side is that our network operations center is currently at Memorial, and we're having some issues as far as ventilation and some things like that. So it's working, but that would be a desire to be able to move that over to South and have its own dedicated spaces. So that's why you see NOC. That's what that's related to there as well. And then again, kind of high-level similar, you're going to see in the, in the $50 million price tag, South is about 28 million. And then when you get into the 70 and the 90 million, there is, it's more than that $42 million range. Again, the yellow highlights are things that, yep, you could do without in the first, the lowest plan, but really, it's not going to be conducive to students and more and things like that. So that's why it's highlighted in yellow. So when we talk about projects, you know, the referendum committee really looked at, okay, what does $50 million get us? We've really come to some conclusion that that is not going to help us in the way that we want to, the direction we want to go and provide the best space for our students. So in the referendum committee, we've had a lot of conversations about that, and we wanted to share that and talk about it. It's something we talked about, but not, not really touching what we wanted to touch. So we talked about, you know, really, is what does 70 million in projects get us? And so, again, we just went through that. And so we talked about, again, if we put some more money into Memorial High School, what does that get us? What if we put more into North and into South? What does that get us for those projects? And if we want another level, up to another 20 million, so now we're into the $90 million range, again, you can see what's different. Now, you're going to see zero for Putnam Heights because that amount is unchanged for Putnam Heights. Putnam Heights is at 6.9 all the way across. But then you would get another 500,000 at Memorial, and then you have some changes at North. Some additional South, that 165,000 is again some more skylights and some more of the things that we're working on to ensure our green rules. And then question three, we even said, well, what if we go even more? And what if we go into that 110 million range? So there was concern about, hey, we really want to touch our schools. What can that look like? And where would those priorities come in? And so that last option that we talked about, then you're going to see North Star comes into play. We talked about secondary schools with co-curriculars. North Star doesn't have an auditorium. It's only secondary that doesn't have an auditorium. So that's where that 7.8 million comes in. And then some other schools have that 9.3, and then you'd hit a little bit of Meadowview, Holm Lane, Longfellow, Mans, CMBV, Sherman, North Star, Northwoods, and DeLong. Those are those high priority things that we talked about when we did the facility study. What do we really need to do in the next five years? And so that's where that additional 9.3 comes in. Again, all of our committee, we've talked about all of these options, but again, these are really important decisions. And so we wanted to let you all know that here were the conversations that we had, and that would be something that we would expect further discussion on tonight. So now if we go dig into our referendum committee work, one of the things that we were looking at was strategizing for financing and how, how can we do this? And so this is a sample of one of the financing options. And one of the things that we talked a lot about and we've talked about as a group before is we want to keep the tax levy flat. We don't want our levy going up significantly and then coming down because that really impacts our tax payers. And so one of the strategies that you use, and this is very common, is you look at, what do you have existing for current debt? What do you have existing for referendum? And then how does that play out over the course of the timeline that you're looking at? So you can see that our existing 139 debt, which is paying off the referendum from 2011, will expire in 30, the 30, 31 school year. That's the same time as our 2016 referendum is paid off as well. And so you can see, if we targeted that 88 cents, which is what the survey said was within our margin of error, we would need, we'd get 4.6 million until the end of the 2030, 31 school year. Then what would happen is if we didn't ask for the full amount in the next year, that 13.6, our levy would drop. And what that's going to do is if we didn't ask for the 13.6 million, that's going to cause issues with the debt, which is in the green box because when, when we issue and we borrow debt, when we do funds, they're looking at future tax revenue. And so if we didn't ask for two different amounts, we wouldn't be able to probably make these payments and repay that debt of the 71 million over the 20 years. And so that's why when we get to the sample questions, you're going to see two amounts. So that way then, again, we're keeping that levy flat and we're not dropping significantly there. That's something different that we've talked about, and I wanted to make a brief overview of that. But what this would do in this model, those, the highlights in the yellow, one of the things that, as I was talking with our group from Baird to kind of figure out, how do we, how do we be strategic with that thing? So I said, you know, if we issued, if we did about 71 million in projects, that gives us about 2 million in operations. They wanted to focus that into the years when ESSR, we didn't have ESSR money anymore, instead of creating this big huge fund balance and then bringing it down. And said, can we target those excess operational dollars to hit when we, we know ESSR is going to be gone? We don't know what the state budget is going to be on if there will be more funds. So that's why those items are highlighted in yellow because that way we'd get more operational dollars there. And the other thing that is important to look at is you can see in the first year, under the 71 million, that there's payments in principal and interest, and then you see zeros in principal. That's because we would just work on paying interest, and then we would focus those principal payments after the existing debt is paid off. Very common strategy that school districts and communities use again and just pay interest so that way then make him help to keep the tax levy flat. So digging into the questions a little bit, I have several samples, and I'll explain the differences for them for you. So this is sample question 1A, and I'm, and I'm saying this would be a $71 million, because that's what we were just looking at. So the yellow would be the dollar amounts that we would put in there. So the first yellow is 4.6 million per year for the 22, 23 school year and for each of the succeeding eight school years. That gets us to 2031, 32. And then the blue changes to the 13.6, and that would be the amount for the rest of the years. Now, the reason why this is 1A is because we have a word variation that we can make in the yellow and the blue, and I'll show you that next. And the pink is highlighted because we would need to articulate, what do we want to ask for as far as the, the rest of the question? So we would determine that as well. And then you have some slides that give you some more ideas on that. So this sample question is the same, again, another version of the question that we just looked at. And what's different is we're articulating the school years. Instead of the succeeding eight years, we're saying for the 22, 23 school year through the 31, 32 school year. And then in the next part, 13.6 for 2032 to 2033 through 41, 42. This is purely a board decision, and either words are legal. It's just that those were two options of how do you want to word it? Do you want to say specifically the years? Or do you want to say for each of the succeeding number of years? And so I didn't, I wasn't aware of that, but I was working with a bonded attorney in preparation for this meeting. And so that was something that I wanted to share with you as well because one may resonate better than the others. They both have the same outcome and the same impact. It's just if there's a personal preference to the board. Again, this is just kind of another picture of our goal. So right now, in the black, that's the debt that we have outstanding already for the referendum that's on 2011. And then the blue in the 2016. So you can see our current debt levy is a dollar four on a $100,000 house. And so with this proposal that we're looking at, we would raise the debt levy to 148, which is 44 cents on a $100,000 home. And so then you can see, once we get to 31, 32, that's why we need to ask for the 13.6 million because the, if we don't, the blue and the black goes away, and then our tax levy drops significantly, and that creates that issue for the debt service being swept forward. Like I said before, the referendum committee looked at, you know, we looked at a $50 million option. We looked at a $70 million option. And then we said, okay, if the 70-ish million dollar gets us to what the survey says within margin of error, what if we wanted to go beyond? We know that we have more needs. We know that we have more needs. What if we went beyond and added a second question? What could that look like? So that's where this slide comes up, is we said, how do we get to ninety-ish? So this was an opportunity to get to ninety-ish in this question. If the board chose to have two questions on the ballot, you can see to issue twenty one million in debt, again, we would structure the payments. But that would add over the twenty years about fourteen cents on a hundred thousand dollar home. And so again, just a sample of an idea that was discussed and talked about again to articulate the community that we wanted to recognize what they talked about in the survey and what the survey told us. But this was a way to tell our community we're not done. And these are some things that we've identified that we'd really like to do now. And another part of our story is we know that we're gonna be coming back to referendum likely in another five years. And so again, just keeping that out there to look at, because we know we have more facilities that we're not hitting this amount. And then we look at one step farther and said, okay, what if we wanted to go to that hundred and ten? What does that look like? And that tax impact is twenty seven cents. And again, that would be structured based upon what we've learned and what we've talked about. And so, again, I've been working with Baird to kind of figure out how can we get to that end goal and how much will it cost us in the end of the board wants to consider these conditions. This is a sample debt question for capital referendum. And so basically, this question's a little simpler because the blue highlight, the general obligation bonds, that's what signifies that it's a debt question. And then we would have to fill in the yellow for the amount of bonds that we believe that we're going to issue. And that would be based upon the projects that we want to complete. And then again, the pink would be the words of what do we want to articulate that we're going to use these funds for. So some sample capital questions to consider or words. And a lot of this came right from the survey. So we could say we wanna add classroom space. We could be more specific and say add classroom space at Putnam Heights, North High School, South Middle School. We could say improve spaces at Memorial and North High School. We could say improve spaces at secondary schools, remodel South Middle School. Again, the words would be dependent upon the amount of the question and the level of specificity that the board wants to have. And then if we kept it broad, then in the additional details, as we're talking about the referendum and gaining education, we would be more specific as to what does that look like. There's a lot of low loans right now because of inflation and projects that we know, we have that all built into our numbers. But if we say we're only gonna touch, you know, buildings A, B and C, and then our bids come in lower and we have more money, then we might wanna touch something else, then we didn't hit the box. You know, let's say, I'll just use Meterview because we know there's a potential on the table for expansion in the future there. If we didn't list Meterview and our bids keep in the lower and we have some money, then we have, you know, that transparency concern. And so I would recommend that we be a little bit more broad and as we're telling our story, we work together so that way then our community knows that, hey, your, our budgets and our numbers are predicted on what's happening today. But we know that, you know, our kids are gonna go to bed and we like to, won't be doing construction for a year, maybe two years. And so we don't wanna lock ourselves into a box and then have access funds. Another option that we worked on after one of our referendum committee work sessions was the fact that maybe, maybe we don't wanna put two questions on the ballot. Maybe we just wanna put one question on the ballot and what could that look like? And so this is a result of that meeting. And so looking at, again, very similar, the first two columns are very similar to what we looked at before. You know, our debt's gonna change in thirty thirty one. And so what would this look like if we wanted to do ninety two million dollars in projects? And so again, that amount that we would ask for would go to six million in through twenty thirty one thirty two. And then it would go to fifteen million after that. And then we would have two debt issuances, you know, one to do the first set of projects and then another issuance a little bit later. So that way then, you know, because we're not gonna do seventy one right now once. And so you get a little bit strategic about when you issue the debt, so that way then you, you know, maybe decrease your interest costs a little bit and your principal payments as well. And so that's why you see the twenty one million on the right hand side looks a little bit different. And so again, creative financing and whether you need the funds and when are you doing the construction. But in the end, it still makes those needs up given those projects that you're looking to get around. And so this proposal here has a tax impact of fifty four cents on a hundred thousand dollar home. So it's a hundred and, it's a dollar eight on a two hundred thousand dollar home. So again, similar structure, it's just built into one question instead of two questions. And so what would that look like as far as the sample question? Again, really the yellow and the blue is what's gonna change. So six million per year for twenty twenty three and for issues succeeding eight years. And then fifteen million for the thirty one thirty two, which is forty, this one was thirteen years after. So that was the other difference from the first question to this question is it's two years longer. Again, to be able to do any financing and you're looking at a little bit further. That's articulated a little bit better here, because you can see the yellow is six million for the same ten years. And then it goes out to fifteen million until forty four forty five. So that makes it twenty three years instead of twenty one. And then again, the pink or the purple would need to be disassociated articulated here for workers. One of the things that we did learn from the survey and we touched on a little bit was, you know, what words resonated with our community? And where did we see that operational piece come in? And so this was just a reminder of the fact that, you know, when we said that we would consider using operations for students behind on basic skills, then it's seventy nine percent support. More support for mental and emotional needs, again, seventy seven percent support. And then increased spending on building maintenance, adding classroom space at three schools. And the more specificity that we got, then the, you know, the smaller the number got. And I think that you'll remember that we asked Don about that when he was here. And he said that, maybe I'm a Northside parent and I've never been in South Middle School. And so how do I know what South Middle School means? And frankly, why do I care about South Middle School if it's not gonna teach my kids? That's not the way that we wanna portray it, but he said that the more specificity you get, some people just don't know because they might not have experienced or been in that building. And so that's why he had said, it's not that they didn't think it was important, it's just the more specific that you get, the more education you need to do and tell your community, why do we need to look at South Middle School? So using that as kind of some ideas, you know, operating where City Center, and I kept it purple to kind of help you tie back to the question in the purple. So, you know, we could say it's support for students behind on basic skills. What does that look like? How are we gonna articulate that as we're telling our story? What is support for mental and emotional needs? What does that look like? Again, we need to be able to be able to articulate and tell our community what does that mean. And if we're spending on building maintenance, that one would be easy. We're currently spending one point eight million. We know that we should be spending probably in the two four to two six a year to be able to get caught up with the state, even more if we could. Debt service for capital improvement projects, again, I think that speaks pretty easily that we're gonna issue debt to pay for these big projects so we can get them done in the next time we can. And then I think we need to think about the specific buildings, you know, are we gonna be very specific? Or are we gonna be more broad and look at like district wide maintenance and renovations? So those are all things that we need to consider as you're working through, what does that look like? Another thing that we talked about in the referendum committee was, again, statistics. And, you know, where, where is the school district likely to land if we go to referendum in November? Or if we wait till April? And so we can see here that November has historically been the best time to go to referendum for school districts. It's not that there's more support per se, it's just that the favorable outcomes is in that seventy six to seventy seven percent. April is another mean time, when they know and there's still overwhelming support. But you do see a difference from that seventy six down to fifty five percent for issuing debts. And then even the non-recurring operational question evolves from seventy seven to sixty seven. So, yeah, we talked a lot about that and about our strategy. And then, you know, some of the other things that are happening in our community of like the city putting their question on the ballot. And so we did learn a little bit about that with Don, with the one who presented his survey. So when we were talking about pros and cons of the date, like, we know that our survey data shows that there's gonna be less support if there's two entities with questions on the ballot. So that could be viewed as a con. We know that from the statistics, E C S D on the ballot in November, when we look at for school districts, that should be a pro. The other pro that we've talked about is that can impact our twenty two twenty three budget. Because the board would adopt two budgets at the end of October. And we wait for the referendum and we said the levy based upon the outcome of the referendum. So it can impact the current fiscal year if we go in November. Another thing that we felt was a pro was that we might be able to start some of those small construction projects in summer of twenty three. If we postpone and wait until April, we won't start construction projects until the summer of twenty twenty four. Because we won't be able to levy the money and have it to start any small construction projects in the length of time to finish the drawings and get it out to bid. That's not gonna happen from April until June, you know, we won't build that building. If E C A goes into April, we will not impact the budget for twenty two twenty three. The first time we see that impacted is twenty three twenty four. And then again, just referring back to the statistics that we saw with Baird, they've been tracking it since two thousand. And so again, you know, a positive time to go is in November. So the things that, you know, we were hoping to discuss a little bit more tonight is, you know, does the board want to go with one question? I'm assuming an operating question that would consider that the survey tax tolerance, that doesn't get into everything that's necessary. You know, but it would touch South Middle School, Putnam Heights, North High School and Memorial High School. If the board chose to go with one operating question, is there a desire to go with a second capital question? It recognizes in that first question that we're honoring the survey and the tax tolerance. And then we're still getting the opportunity to tell our community that, hey, we have more needs. We already know we have more needs than what we can get into this box and what our community can support. But do we target those things that are very near and dear to our hearts and impact that whole curricular needs, which we know will impact our social and emotional learning and our mental health? We've all said, the more that kids are connected, the better they do all around school. Or is the question to go with an operating question that's outside of our survey tax tolerance? And if we do that, then what's our rationale and what's gonna be covered in that as well? So decisions and things that we would like to talk about tonight is we need to think, are we going November for sure or April? The amount, the number of questions, and then the type of question. And for discussion tonight, you know, like to mention where we started, April fifteenth, are we gonna be, April fifteenth, sorry, August fifteenth, are we gonna be ready to adopt the resolution? Through our work tonight, are we ready to get that email so the board will be able to adapt it? And be ready to go? If not, we would need to have a work session or a special meeting or something because the deadline to certify and adapt the resolution is August thirtieth. And so, you know, that's kind of our timeline for the event. And then really, we're ready to open it up for discussion, questions and next steps.
Thank you, Abby, for all the work that you have done. It's obviously a lot and it's exploring a lot of different avenues, you know, to look at so that we can really think about, you know, what is our, what are our strategies, you know, the one versus two questions, the various amounts. It's a ton of work to make sure that we have all the information that we need. So thank you. And thank you to the referendum committee who's been working on this now for six months or more, really. I mean, budget development had really transferred over and now is formally the referendum committee. And that, that extra work puts us at an advantage of getting to this point where I'm hopeful that we, that we will be on August fifteenth and ready to go out, that we can get there tonight. But the work that's done. So, you know, as far as putting something forward, I think there's no question that we need to go in November. Feelings on everything else too, but I'll, I'll keep it there.
Make a motion to go in November?
I don't think we can have done anything tonight, because we're in work session, so we don't have anything on the agenda. So I think it's more of a consensus building. We come back on, come back on the fifteenth and have it as an item and a whole, I mean, it can be structured to be November and then it would just be a move to adopt. So I think because of the way we structure the agenda since I, we probably should not formally act on anything.
For me, I know that the other questions fall in line very much after the date. So I would feel best if I had, if I had a date in mind, then the rest.
Well, I mean, what are the rest of you think?
Well, and so the referendum committee meets next week and eight thirty Wednesday. Getting just a week off, so we meet Wednesday. And as a part of that, I would think that we're going to try to at least draft some questions to bring forward. So starting with consensus building just around the date and bringing that then back to the committee, I think would be operationally a good way to go. And I, I agree. I think we're obviously in a November, we've had a lot of conversations within our referendum committee. And we were leaning toward November, we were leaning in, in kind of straw poll toward one question, I think. We were also leaning toward, so the type, either capital or non-reoccurring, right? Yeah, so I believe non-reoccurring was where we were, we were leaning. And the amount, I think, is something we really could get a lot of feedback tonight on. So that we take that back to the referendum committee and have the direction.
Yeah, I guess for me, I don't really want, I wanna move forward. I don't necessarily wanna go back. I'd love to leave tonight knowing the date that you all agree. I understand maybe it doesn't
Right, and I don't
But I'd love to know that we're
I think that's, I think the goal is to really get to giving the referendum committee as little work to do as possible. I mean, it might be doing some of the wordsmithing, it might be, but saying like, my hope for tonight is that we've got, I don't think there's a lot of, does anybody disagree that we ought to be going in November?
We have consensus.
So there, go ahead, Erica.
Can I, can I zoom out for a second? Was there any discussion in the referendum committee about a system for referendum in the district? Like for, because, you know, I'm, I'm reminded of the, the James, what does he say? James Clear says, you don't rise to your aspiration, you fall to the level of your systems. And I feel like we, the thing that I'm really hung up on is, is we don't have a system for referenda in our school district. We just kind of let things accumulate and then we go for less than we need. And then the things just accumulate and then we have to go for less than we need. And if there was a, I would feel really comfortable, I think, if I sort of knew if it was mapped out, you know, over the next ten years or whatever it might be, when we might be going to referendum and for what? You know, if it's, well, we will have this level of need and, you know, you said five years or whatever it might be. Or we wanna, we want to address athletics and, you know, and so I
We've talked about that, we should feel any better. We've talked about that in referendum committee, we've talked about our year plan.
Oh, well, that's lovely.
We've kept very high level of what we did learn and, you know, some of the other districts that have been successful with a strategy of referendum. So we look a lot at the cross. The cross consistently goes for operations every three to five years. And the question is very similar, it's always non-recurring. And so then we looked at some capital things too, and unfortunately, that's how school districts operate now. Because there hasn't been more state funding and we could be far too far behind, is that referendums are only an opportunity. So what we talked about was, okay, what do we need in the next five years? And then we're telling our story that you work, this is gonna be a normal, so we went through referendum in twenty sixteen. You know, in a perfect world, if things had stayed, we would have gone in twenty twenty one because we had a debt draft in twenty twenty one and that would have come to our tax levy plan. So, but because of all the other things in COVID, like it just wasn't realistic. And so part of what we've talked about is being very intentional, just like you're talking about, and knowing if we do this much. So we know in the next ten years, we have about a hundred twenty seven million in needs, right? Based upon our facility study. So that's twelve million dollars a year. Well, we know that our survey tells us, you know, our amount is, is less than that. So if we hit those high priority needs now, we could hit potentially all of the high priority needs, but we wouldn't be able to do the level that we need to. So we focused on where do we need space? Because we know we've got kiddos coming in. And then what, what is our other main needs? And South is obviously a big aim because there's a lot of maintenance that needs to be done. And so then it's starting to be focused, okay, so here's what we can do now. And that's why you have the hundred and ten million option, because then we can touch some more schools. And we can make that list for five years, a little bit less. And in five years, we'll know more, hopefully no more of healthcare funding and what's happened over the next five years. We'll also know more, hopefully, about our enrollment and our population needs as Um, we'll also know more hopefully about our enrollment and our population needs as well. Um, like we should know more about the magnitude annexation and do, does that impact the fact that we might need more space there? And so I think really what we focused in is, you know, what did the survey tell us? What projects can we fit in there and then how do we move forward? But beyond like being strategic and knowing that we probably want to come back in five years and kind of make that our regular routine, that's as much as we can talk about, we've been really focused on what's going to happen in November or April and what can we fit with the asset.
It doesn't answer all the questions, but just to reassure you, I guess it's exactly what the referendum committee would be.
Right, yeah, I mean, because I, and I think what's missing for me in 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 this and and I, I think November is what it has to be just for my own, you know, if if that's what everyone else is feeling, it's fine with me. But I feel like what's missing is the the aspirational um component uh and and really the 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 part that gets to to more of our, maybe our R two and our R three. Uh, you know, what are the things that, because, you know, and and obviously improving buildings improves everyone's lives and it helps our children tremendously in in many, many ways. But um, you know, some of the the referendum question that I, you know, questions that I I was reading this spring, you know, they they were calling out specific target areas, whether that was, you know, technology or um uh, like, you know, maybe like tech ed and they did call out, you know, maker spaces or um, you know, workforce uh development or athletics, athletics were a big one in some of the referendum, um, you know, music, art, you know, improvements. And, you know, and I, and without a a sort of um thinking about this in a, well, we'll do capital and and maybe operating and then we'll have, you know, two years from now, there'll be one of those maybe a- aspirational referendum where we're really saying to our community, like, this is what we want, big dream, big picture. This is what our community asks us to guarantee for their children. So let's see, you know, let's link perhaps some capital projects to big goals.
So, so it's a great segue because that's really the two question uh thing that we were bringing forward. Uh, that that main question of what we can fit in a fifty million dollar or seventy one million dollar capital. And then a second question that brings in those aspirational goals of athletics and co-curricular and extracurricular. It, I think one of the things that would be really helpful for Wednesday, not next week, this Wednesday, a couple of days. Would be to know from the from the referendum committee if we're working on one or two question referendum. Because do do we ask for everything tied together or or do we ask for those building maintenance and and the operational things that from the survey we know are very important to the community? And then also ask for aspirational things that we've heard from the community that are really important to them, like fan rooms and athletic turf and and those kind of things. So I think what you're saying is really in line with what we've been talking.
I think that that, you know, I think the challenge, you know, commissioners are, you know, I, like everyone said, that, you know, that that that's a great point. I think that 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 aspirational, aspirational piece of thinking also has to be tempered actually with the reality of the dollar. And also has to be tempered with the reality of actually the economic status of, I don't know, what people are 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 going through. So I I I would, I would argue that, you know, we we make the facility study available and and how it was highlighted in this presentation. It's really that green, purple and blue. And uh, one twenty seven is the lowly aspirational piece is actually really two hundred and something million. And how do we, beginning now, uh, you know, I unfortunately we do not have a systems approach to any of this. Uh, beginning now, if it is the aspirational piece, let's start with purple, uh, purple, blue and green as the number. And saying, uh, uh, ideally as a school board, as a community, do we commit to this two hundred and, and realizing that that number, uh, was there not inflation, uh, 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 state support? But if you, if anybody, it's it's only three pages, you should read that Wisconsin policy form, Wisconsin ranks in school spending. It actually give you an indicator where we're going. Unfortunately, I'm not as optimistic as actually, we don't know, uh, uh, we're continuing to go, we're we're twenty fifth. Uh, we sacrifice our the uh, the politics in our state of sacrifice that actually low tax burden, which perceive as positive is in direct contrast, actually funding for education in states. So the only ones worse than us, I think, is Idaho and uh
Well, can I just say, is there anything else on the date? Is it, is any of this really a date discussion? I don't want to lose that thread about November, April. Anything else that, is everybody in agreement on November or anything else that's?
I don't actually, I think we, I don't think we like have a
I think the
Sure, the aspirational had a date component to it or?
I just think it helps, it helps me think of the context of when we go to referendum. At as when will we go to the next? Because this is, again, if we fall to the level of our system, our system is that we poorly fund education at the state level and we require local tax dollars to fund our schools. O'Clare is sitting anywhere between one and a half to three and a half dollars behind in their mill rate compared to, you know, Aliva and Fall Creek and Augusta. So, you know, if we're going to say that we're not going to raise it above a dollar, we're not even coming into, we're not even coming into competition with some smaller districts just as our neighbors. So I'm just saying that I think that the when we go for me is just as important as when will we go next time and for what? And because that that system that we set up for our, for our kids and our staff, that guarantees consistency and, you know, that that that's what I was talking about it in the context of. And I'm fine with as soon as right now, but I want it again.
Well, the system, the system starts now and the agreed upon, the the agreed upon amount, I would actually see the agreed upon amount take it from the aspirational piece of the facility study. For me though, where I, where I think the struggle is when we talk about aspirational though is what does the future of education look like from an operational standpoint? But but yeah, but but to but to your point, I think using, you know, you know, that one twenty seven, you know, I already did. It looks like we're getting close if we get to like ninety million. Like once we, right, so for for, so for me, it's, it you, you look at, if you take the blue, green, that blue, green and purple on that sheet, in reality, it's over like two hundred and something million dollars. So how do we in a matter of, is it three referendums, four referendums, hit that mark?
And what are the other things that we're missing that aren't even part of that?
I do not know.
Operationally, dreams for our kids.
And like I said, I, we, we, uh, I, I, I
Yeah, I'm I'm fine with going soon, but I just, I want to go soon again.
Right, and I think it's so um next year when we reassign seats, put in for a spot on the referendum committee. Because that's going to be developing that system and it's going to go, Dr. Johnson will be happy to to be not following. He's going to see it for you.
Well, everything you've said is what we've talked.
Yeah.
That's not the future, that's now.
Right, and I think so, I think that that blue, green, purple gets us a little bit of aspiration, right? I mean, it gets us the auditorium at at Memorial, it gets us maker spaces and things at North, it gets us turf on some of these things. So that that is the, and I think Abby, that's the the ninety, like if it was one question, that ninety two million, right? That was the sample question, A and B on thirty four and thirty five. Okay, so and I realize that that's then, I think that's at the, that's like the dollar eight. And that level of support was just below, and you said exceeds the margin of error. If the margin of error is low, then we're above fifty percent and that's all we need now granted, right? So exceeds margin error would be completely outside their four point nine percent, that would be forty five percent. Anyhow, uh, I think that, so it seems like we're all like, I want to stay focused on tonight so that we can, we we have to come back. We probably have, we may have to come back sooner than five years and we need to be building in that vision as we go and that development. As Markwell just said, the system starts now, right? And that that's going to be built by the referendum committee, maybe that's something to consider as we go through our governance is can we find spots in our calendar so that instead of referendum committee, we're over the next several years, we're we're having a quarterly discussion on referendum planning with all of us. Because uh, Stephanie and I were at the referendum committee on Wednesday and, you know, you really get that sense of when we do committees, there are people that have have more information and people that have less information that comes through quite clearly. So maybe we need to all be talking about this or whoever is on the board.
Who will come out in setting aside time for a budget that will naturally that
Right, and so as we go through this year, I think one of the things that we need to be looking at, especially, you know, you and I as president and vice president for the leadership this year is are there changes we could make in that calendar to open that space more effectively for for a more, you know, and we can see how the, you know, we'll see how the monitoring goes this year and our focus on results and whatnot, but that that is an idea that we could build. So um, we've got a date that we're all, I think um the other two real questions, like I think Abby had four questions on there, right? Number of questions and type of question, but I think the number of questions might actually set the type of question. If we're going to go with one question, it has to encompass those two things if, and one of the discussions that has been had is that potentially doing kind of a two bit question.
Will be two separate.
Two separate questions, yes, excuse me. One of the things that, you know, came out quite strongly at the last referendum meeting was the idea that, like, and I I remain this way, that I think one question is right, we go, I might have an easier time looking at that, like, here's the basics, here's the extras. If there wasn't a third question, is the community going to be on there? Um, so I I personally think that we need to do just one question. And then then I, then that, if we got, you know, if we, and we can, we should discuss that, but if we can get to, do we do one or two? And we can start talking about the amount, which may be the sticking point because as we went around at that meeting, there was a, you know.
Something that changed for me since that meeting is that Abby consulted with John. The email that she sent, I wonder if you could talk about that because I couldn't get the logic to click for two questions, but clearly there's a logic and he told you about it.
Yeah, so the logic um was kind of going back to one of the things that we talked about was the the benchmarks and the pieces of the survey. And well, there was initial support of fifty five percent, fifty five point one percent for seven point five million for twenty years. And so I said, I asked him to explain to me what were the three benchmarks of what they need? Why do you ask the same or similar question three times? Well, the first time is just a to gain, how much information do they have and what do they know about referendums? Then give them some information about the referendum, what they're looking at, then how does that change if any support? And then the third question is really to figure out how much are you willing to pay and support? And so one of, so that kind of clicked for me as well and it really came down to ask it three different ways because they want to be able to see what's initial support, how much information do they have? And secondly, now I've given you some information, how does that change if it changes? And then what are you willing to pay? And so that third piece or that first, that third question is really testing out the dollar amounts that the respondents are willing to make and help them recommend to us. And so he said, when I asked him about, okay, so here's some of the things that we're struggling with in the support. You know, one question versus two, so one question targeting the seventy million, that gets us within the margin of error. And that's saying to our community, hey, we're recognizing this is what you told us, we're listening to the results of the survey, but we have more needs. And so here's another in addition that helps get us closer to our end goal. And so really respecting what they told us, but identifying that this is our needs. I don't remember what else the email said, I don't know.
And in the referendum committee, I spoke in favor um of the two question. I've almost myself come full circle because I hope it doesn't confuse people. We have a city question that's out there and we have an additional question. It's the school district question that has two parts. And I I I I don't know when you're in a ballot box voting and you're reading multiple questions, all how the cumulative impact of feeding all of those questions impacts a decision.
One thing for Josh and Erica that we big purpose last time, that the way it will appear on the ballot, you know, the cities, cities always listed first in the school district. We're always last, um, we're always last, yeah, but it's not, you know, there's no visual separation on the ballot, they're they're there together.
So that's why I remained, I feel this front, like if there wasn't that third question, I think I would have a lot more, I I still might rather put everything and say, give everybody the reason, like whatever piece you like that you're willing to say yes for on one. But I would have a lot easier time talking about it and feeling that way if there wasn't that third question. Because I, you know, I Don did say that, like, people, you know, can do the one, two punch and, you know, we saw at the um, W P E N summit, you know, we were at that and, you know, they had their sign and it was yes on one, yes on two, you know, they were, they had two questions going. But I just really struggle with the idea that we have another, we have a city referendum. Uh, you know, that supports that, that, you know, the city's got needs as well. And I'd say, I do feel strongly that like one question for me is the way to go. I understand the rationale and I think in a different situation, it might be worth it. I also don't think that we're going so crazy above where we are with that level. Like we are still within the margin of error, like we are then banking more that the margin of error is, that they are a little low. That they're, no, not that it's incorrect, but that that they're, that the margin error is on our, in our favor as opposed to against it. And I get that, I also believe in this community. I believe in that there are people that would say, that are going to support us because they believe in our public schools and they are going to believe in a vision of aspiration, even if it's not everything we need. But for me, it's it's one question, the amount we can talk about and, you know, but
Sounds reasoning seems to be the opposite. So he's talking about to not push, said he's from Abby's, to not push beyond the eighty dollar tax increase because the city has questions, right? And the context, what was it, for the context of that November uh election, inflation, stock market, low consumer confidence and all the potential negative political issues.
I'm I'm not convinced by any of those and we've got evidence from our last referendum that our community supported our district more than we thought it would. We've got evidence from the last two school board elections that our community supports the direction of the district. So I realize that there are, there, yeah, we can I know, I know, I I'm not
Saying the logic of one question, two.
I understand, I'm not moved by it, you know, if the rest of the board says we're going to go two questions, it doesn't matter if I if I don't like it. Consensus can be six, one, but I I think one question is the way to go.
I think for for me, I I I would, I would entertain, I would entertain Ian, and my apologies for standing once again, my my back shoes are actually not resolved. And like I said, I'm going to cry in front of adults. Uh, I I I guess for me, whether or not going back, back and forth with the number of questions that that the the concern that I have, I I'm not sure. I think the the two question may have to remain because, you know, just hearing some of the feedback, I I am not certain that we would actually come to an agreement on a, on an amount with the one question. I'm 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 not, I'm not sure, you know, because like I said, on the opposite end, uh, 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 Tim, I think the 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 realities of supporting education are also tempered by the realities that I've lived experience currently in these particular times.
More rosy outlook on our community than some other people. I believe our community will support us.
A ro- a rosy outlook to the lived experience of being able to uh, put food on the table and everything, and all those other expenses, the the reality and we, I think we would all support, uh, uh, support, but tho- tho- those are realities. So I I would say, and we can, we'll talk about this on Wednesday, I'm not necessarily sure I would abandon the two question, because if we go one question, I really think the debate about actually the amount, I'm not sure, I I I think will potentially be I'm not sure we would actually really be, really be close. And I guess to, I saw that email and I, my disagreement actually with fifty million is actually a nonstarter for me. So I I'll just, I'll I'll go ahead and that's fifty million, if that's a nonstarter for me, I I I won't support fifty million. So I I don't care if it's fifty eight percent, it could be seventy five percent, fifty million, that doesn't, that doesn't move the needle. Anywhere that we need to be, so, but I also but I also, like I said, so for me, if, if we were to, if we were to decide if there's a consensus in terms of the number of questions, you know, I, I think before we leave here, if we were to say just one question, what I would actually like to get a sense of, so we can talk about it on Wednesday, where, where are individuals about the amount? Because I, because for me, that goes into that type of question. And, and what I really, what's really has to be there for the type of question, given the feedback that I heard, as I talk to people is we really have to articulate and really promote what that operational money's going to be utilized for. And it has to be, it has to be distinctively that, you know, most of us will see that the potentially the impact of actually like class size, teacher support, student, uh, students as well, students, student staff supporting and not sheer number, but what will those individuals do in their capacity as, 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 as they're hired. And so for me, I like to see, I like to see the amount. So if we go one question, I think the follow up in, in, in our time is where, where are people thinking about a particular amount?
That's the follow up either way we go, right? It's, you know.
Well, let's talk about how much money we think we could ask for. And I think that perhaps it would be useful at the, at some of the points along the way to have in mind what that amount would be on a $200,000 home. Like what's the cost for a median home to keep in mind on the table? So I think that we've eliminated 50. I mean, in the, in the last budget referendum committee meeting, there seemed consensus, I think that 50 is not enough. Maybe I'm incorrect in that assumption. I could be corrected now. That's fine. But I do think that when we look at different target amounts, you should have on the table with us, what that looks like for the median homeowner at every point. Just going to harp on this one more time before we talk about a dollar amount. I think our community really needs to understand. So one of the things I, I've, I've asked for before, maybe this would be really beneficial, is Ken, you had that mill rate slide, the black and the something and the green with the projection. I want to see that 10 years ago till before. I want to see 10 years prior, what that looked like. Because I don't think our community understands just how low that starting mill rate is. Incredibly low. And when we look at our neighboring school districts, $4 behind.
I haven't looked at neighboring schools.
I just sent you, I sent you guys the map. It's, we don't value our kids in this district any less than Augusta or Falk Creek or Osseo or Gilmanton or any of those school districts. And I mean, you know, Bloomer, a lot of these districts are all, you know, two plus dollars ahead of us. And so when, when we're talking about a dollar onto the mill rate, that doesn't even make a dent in how, in where we are just being behind our neighbors. And I think that that's really important, that we talk to the community about how low we are starting and what that green adjustment gets us back to. Cause my hunch is it gets us back to some level of consistency, if not still below where we might've been five years ago, six, seven years ago.
Yeah.
Probably. Yeah. So I'm thinking, you know, and I think something we heard in the, you know, and that we've looked at, sort of the drop in student academic performance, we've seen this drop from like 2017, right? There's this like, well, I bet if we overlaid the drop in our funding and our mill rate with our student achievement rates, what would we see? And we put our money where our mouth is, you know what I mean? And so I, as far as being aspirational and saying like, what is the dollar amount? I think it's really important for us to keep in mind that a dollar is not that much. Like it really isn't. So, I mean, it, it's not in the big scheme of things. Now it is from where we're starting, you know, adding a hundred dollars on, you know, to a tax bill every year. It's something, but you know, compared to what our neighbors are paying on their $200,000 home, it's not, it's not, we're not comparing apples to apples.
So Abby, the two questions that you have as samples, right? That first one is 4.6 million for the first several years. That's the $70 million option, right? It's this like blue and green on those maps. Right? Okay. And then the other, like, we can talk about the two questions, right? Cause the second question just adds this next chunk, but I'm going to talk about it in one question because that's where I want to be. The other question that's on there is the 90 million, right? That's blue, green, purple. Like you were suggesting that.
But only, only, only purple for Memorial North.
Not for South is what you're saying.
For South.
For South, for South. It finishes, it finishes off, it finishes off South.
It does like.
Right, 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 right. Yeah. But I mean, so that, but that's what we just saw. That's, so I think those are, you know, if we're going to talk about the amounts that we ought to ask for, I mean, those seem like two reasonable benchmarks, right? It's the baseline need, right? And then it's some aspirational levels. You know, I think, you know, I'd love to ask for more because I, again, you've got the lived experience, you've got the realities. I also believe in this community to step up and support our schools if we ask them to do so. Sometimes you just have to ask. However, I think those are two reasonable levels to talk about, right? And if we can, you know, I, to me, there's no question that we should be going for the 92 million. We're going to hear some discussion about whether we ought to be going at it in the two phase, right? The two questions, like the 70 million baseline and the second question, or whether we do it in one. But I mean, I think those are, you know, then we can, I think we can, if you want to talk about, yeah, we could, we could split individual dollars on this thing, right? But those are two good baselines and we've got plans for both of those levels. So if we're going to talk about what things, and we, we have the cost built in right on the chart there, right? It's 88 cents, it's a dollar eight. You know, like what, what do people think? You know, do we, do we just do the 70 million or do we look for the 90 million? Or do we go higher?
Can you do the slide 12?
Whether we do it in one or two questions, that's, I think we can maybe set that aside for right now.
Okay. There's an error on this, right?
Yes.
Okay.
It has to be in the 108 and the 138. It looks like we get more 108 than 138.
So.
I don't think that's. It's not an error. No, it's not because the difference in the debt is different. So you can see in the 108, we get $92 million of projects and that gets us 2 million. And I think it's over a longer period of time than the dollar's 38. And the dollar 38 gets us 70, 75 million and it gets us about 1.6 million.
Same question, Phil. I don't get it.
It's a longer period.
So we're mixing, that formula is on this slide?
Just like in that question though, in the question example that, that was given, how they changed the time, time period over time, that's the, uh, yeah, exactly. I wish I took an additional accounting class to tell a better reason why. But it's pretty much kind of what, uh, so yeah, I, I, I don't know. That's, that's the funny math that other people actually like hire to actually like, like take.
Funny, but it's actual math.
We were trying to, yeah, it was.
Accounting practices, yeah.
Yes. And how many, how much money? And so we were mixing and matching terms. So I apologize that that wasn't clear. That one was the 20 year term versus the 22 or 23 year term or 21 to 23. So that is.
So go, go a slide before this. So in the survey, we asked three price points.
Correct.
We asked 80, 140 and 200. The trend line is the assumptions that connect those together. All right. So if, if I'm going to point at about a hundred and $5 on a $200,000 home, right?
Yes, this is on it.
Okay. We're at a 50%. Pretty close. If we go to 140, the amount that drops off is almost 20% from the 80. I'm, I'm much more comfortable at just over that hundred dollar level because as I said in, in the referendum committee before, I'm okay with shooting under the wire and leaving money on the table and having it successful than, than hoping to go forward to that 140 or even that 120 and, um, and overshooting what the community support is. You know, I, I think 15% of the community would vote no on any of this.
Absolutely.
30%.
Yes.
Would vote no on any of this. So we're really hoping, where is, where, where is the support for the remaining, the remaining folks that would, that.
We'll also get at least a quarter of a men about any amount as well, right? I mean, you're shooting for the 40% in the middle. Like how do you, where can you peel those off? Right? I mean, Abby, like we could, Abby's got it on slide 12, right? I mean, it's at 88 cents, which is our one, our first plan there. It's the blue, green plan. And we got 54. And at 108, 88, you got 54.
It's just the blue.
You go back to that line graph for a second. I worry that these relationships are being shown as linear and I don't think they are. I think you're going to be, if, if you present it as $95, someone's like, oh, it's less than a hundred bucks. Okay. But if it's a hundred and $5, people are like, whoa, it's over a hundred bucks. Like the difference is insignificant, but psychologically it's different is why. Exactly. It's the same, same thing. So, um, I just, I just don't, I don't, that is not going to change my suggestion. I'm just saying we don't, we shouldn't read into the lines too much.
And that makes me more, I mean, I, I, I get the aspirational question. And in fact, you know, like I was coming in guns blazing to vote no because I wanted more. I want all of it. You know, I want, I want to go out, we're going to have to go out and sell this thing to our community either way. So I'm, I, anyway, that was what, where I was.
Two lacrosse, 100 and what is it? 195?
But the, but the, but the two questions.
Also, yes.
The two question, the two question thing, but the, the two question thing is attractive to me in that if there's that, go back to the linear thing. And again, the linear.
Nonlinear. Actually, that's what.
Nonlinear line graph. The, if we're looking at, you know, if we say 99, right? And then we look at maybe another $20, right? What, and, and.
On the second question.
On the second question and see what happens. Because, you know, like, oh, well, that's only 20 bucks. Maybe it doesn't.
Can you just reassure them though? Only the question that passive is a question that actually gets funded.
Right. So they could just pick the cheap one.
And I'd like to believe that we have, like every voter that walks into there is going to be a very high information voter that's going to know their personal tax impact, that's going to know the priorities that are in each thing. That I would love to believe that. But frankly, it's not going to be the case. And when you're seeing three questions, I just think you're going to give permission to just pick, I'll pick the cheap one because I, like, I do want to support the district, but this one's less money.
I, okay.
That's, that's my reservation. I really like, you know, and Lori, you brought up the bear, you know, Don Lipto's, like, maybe it doesn't work that way, but I'm having a hard time. You're not convinced me in that, you know? But if that's the way we want to go, that's fine. I think we need to ask for the 90 million one way or the other, whether it's in one question or two.
So I think I know all of you at least a little bit. And so I think we're all information seeking people who are trying to work with the logical part of our brains. Unfortunately, that's not the average voter. They're, they're going to come in reacting emotionally to information soup that they're going to be, um, within around the election. And so what I'm thinking about this question, I'm not looking so much at the dollar amount per se, I'm thinking about constituencies. So like what constituency are we going to get motivated to come out to vote? Or someone who might be like, ah, I don't know, but my kid's in band and they're going to get something. Or, ah, I don't know, but we, we, our athletic facilities suck. And so we've been looking for this forever. And so I, I think it's not just a dollar amount. What are we asking for? And how are we activating constituencies to get off the sideline to vote for this? Because I think that's how, how it's likely to be decided because I think it's going to be decided somewhere around probably 45 to 55 in that range. And so motivating certain constituencies to vote and to activate their audiences to vote is how this decision's going to be made. Not, I think it's going to be more important than, than the dollar amount that we ask for. Um, so I think what we need, however this gets, whatever number we put on here, we have to be very clear about what it is that that's going to be coming out of it. And also be very clear about the other things that are not in it because there's a big long list of stuff that's not going to be in it. So when we were, we were kind of going through all the lists of, of things that were there, I was looking at, okay, what, what boxes are we checking for? What constituencies are we checking? Because I, I think that, that those are the folks who are going to get out there and do the, um, the shoe leather work that's going to be needed to get this referendum passed. Uh, it's not going to be getting the number right. Because we, we could, we could stick the number, but if we're, we're not motivating the right constituencies, it doesn't matter. It's a, it's a political question, not an economic question.
Then also, you know, the, the survey that was done, a, a representation of actually kind of the overall population in Eau Claire, uh, that, that survey response, less individuals with actual kids in the district. Um, you know, also, you know, a huge selling point or you don't, you know, what's the selling point actually for that, that aging 65 plus population, which we looked throughout the whole report. It's not a lot of, lot of selling points unless they're like grandkids. And then there's the, you know, the individuals who don't have, 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 you know, have kids, uh, at all in addition, you know? And so for me, it's, it, it, it is the messaging piece. And you think about, you know, uh, you know, a long, a long-term plan, you know, as, as Eau Claire continues to, you know, make all of these ratings as, uh, up and coming and everything like that, you know, you know, does a, a quality schools, a school district, uh, who invests in, is that appealing actually to, 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 to workforce that wants to come here, right? And so those are the things that also have to be put out there. Or, you know, if you, you found a great job here, do you see yourself settling down here because there's an investment in, uh, in the educational experience? And those are, I think that's kind of how you, how you kind of buy in some of those younger voters who, you know, who, who are living in, you know, living in an apartment or a town home that really don't have, you know, that they don't have kids. Well, you know, it looks like there's a commitment here to invest in education. I, the messaging, I think the messaging is going to be important. I think it's going to have to be, I think it's going to have to be targeted and directed. I think also, uh, uh, we'll have to, you know, reach out not only to community members, but you know, I think a, a huge selling point, I think also that was a huge, a hu, a huge boom, uh, for, uh, the last school board election is, you know, hopefully we can actually get our own educators, uh, uh, back out there to actually, you know, assist in, you know, getting that message across why this is particularly potentially important. And then being able to show long-term that we're not going to just stop here. And, and, and the intentions is that, you know, we will, uh, address as much as we can moving forward through multiple referendums. This, you know, all, all this discussion, I think at some point in time, we'll also have to, and I'll keep on bringing this up, but we really have to examine, you know, in the course of the, before, between now and the next referendum, we have to really examine, uh, uh, jumping on some of the larger cities and public private partnerships for, you know, for our schools. But yeah, I, you, you're, you're right. It's going to be, it's, it's a message, a messaging thing. Um, and uh, but I still pretend that like the, the, the amount, certain people will just potentially see that. And like, and so my only pause about, you know, the, the two question piece was that whole, is that first we were under the understanding that you could have worded the questions in a way, right? And it's like, like our question two didn't. And if like, like, our question two didn't pass, three is moot. However, though, the way it is, like, whatever, like, whatever gets the vote. So, yeah, I would, it would not sit well, you know, like, for me, just that the that we have, like, lighting on the second floor south in true turf fields and everything else, like, not, like, I just not, that just would not actually kind of like hold me, like, like, hold me off, I mean, even though I think the game would still be pretty cool. Whoever on the second floor, that'd probably be pretty cool, but that would, that's kind of what's captured in that second question, that would be, that would be like. But once again, it's how you frame it, what's the messaging, what's the messaging behind it? So um, yeah, I I I don't know, the the number, the number question in 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 the in the amount, you know, if, you know, for me, like I said, I I I I feel comfortable, I feel very comfortable, and and for me, I'm, if it's one question, you know, I definitely go a full ninety-two million or 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 seventy-one if it's one question. And if it's two, that's kind of where that, that's where I am. I, you know, I I could potentially be convinced to go a little bit over, but I'm seventy to ninety-two is really kind of where I, where I, where I am in terms of actually getting, uh, I think getting actually the fifty percent amount of like support that would be.
I think irrespective of what, how this, the city council got to the place about putting a referendum question, whether they did or did not uh speak with us about it, um, I don't know that it's necessarily a bad thing because they have their own constituency, they are gonna be seeking to motivate to vote yes on a referendum question. And.
The question is actually very deliberate for those actually uh constituents, actually, kind of how it's, how it's framed, dude, so.
Right, so uh um to the, to the degree that people are getting out there, we should, we, we have overlapping, but yet somewhat different constituencies. So the the more people we can get coming out to be voting yes for something is is probably a good thing. I don't know how much, you know, tax stress people are gonna be feeling when they're, when they're the ones who are being activated to to go out there and vote for something.
So Mark, well, just that he, sorry, go ahead, Lori.
Uh, I mean, you know, kind of back to some of your point about the psychology of this, what this vote's going to be. I mean, if you have one question and uh the the amount is far above the survey data, I would argue then it was not a data-driven decision.
Mm-hmm.
We are not following the data. You know, either you accept these survey results or you don't. So then the second question gets to your point. So maybe, you know, it is a data-driven decision, but we believe the community wants more and will support more than that's question two. They will or they won't. You know what I mean? But the first question is, should be a lock-in because that's what the data show.
You could, I don't think you can, I mean, you can't, it depends on where you set the bar for, bar above. I mean, we're talking about a two percent margin to fifty percent at a dollar eight. You can say that's not a data-driven decision, and I guess maybe. But you can also say that, you know, yes, it's a smaller, it's a, it's a small, in my view, gamble. Right? If the data is perfect, then we're sunk. Right? If the data, but margin of errors can go either direction. And we, I think we tend to make a mistake, and even on this, even on eighty-eight cents, fifty-four percent, the margin of error is four point nine. If we max out and that poll is wrong in the wrong direction, we'll lose that too. Right? So I think, I think, I think it's wrong to say that that saying a dollar eight or saying the ninety-two million, right, which is the equivalent thing, is not data-driven. It is riskier. In our last election, the board went above what they want, what what was recommended. Like, a nickel, right? Ninety was what was recommended, they went ninety-five cents. This is a bigger, this is a bigger push above. I I don't think you can call it not data-driven. I'm like, if we want to go with two questions, that's fine. To me, there's no question we gotta go for the ninety-two one way or the other, whether it's two questions or one.
But the data and actually historical, actually practices also says that actually putting three questions on an agenda is actually not a data-driven decision, like on a referendum. It.
And also, yeah, he hit many times, two questions is a bad idea.
Yes, and and so it it it, it it, so we would have three. And so, so it's that, I guess for me, I guess how how you're interpreting, how you're interpreting data from a historical perspective, as you were saying, the more questions that are on a referendum, the more likely they are to fail. So then us making a decision to potentially put those multiple on there, the more likely we're saying that actually we, we bring in a larger possibility of actually our, the referendum question failing. Also data-driven. And so I, it it, I, it's it's just a bit, it's just, it's just debatable. I, but I agree, like, once again, like, I, I, if if we're at seventy-one million, I I I could go, you know, I I I I I also could go, I could also go ninety in a two question or 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 a one. Uh, I I just, for me, because if you're talking about a data-driven decision, that means actually you, you're relegating yourself to this fifty-seven percent, fifty million. Like I said, that's, I I, that's, that's just like a, that's just like a non-starter.
Yeah, I think um if we don't do something that's consistent with this, with the this survey, it doesn't mean they're not making a data-driven decision. This is just one data point, right? This is one piece of information. Mark, well, um presented a different piece of information. Um, we saw how the twenty sixteen election turned out based upon what we thought was going to happen on um polls. Polls, um, and this is based upon no campaigning, no messaging, you know. And so I I, it's just one, it's just one piece of information. And I I don't think we can, or should, just hang our hat on one, one thing. I think it's, it's useful and important.
There's the data on the past, you know, the past referendum to, or that I think, you know.
It seems different than it was, but it's, but the same, at the same time, most of the people who voted in that election are still here. Like, the population hasn't changed that much.
You know, there's potentially less actually kids enrolled in local school districts than they were before. So there's that, there's that whole other, whole other.
So I think we can, you know, we can go round and round. It might be helpful to take sort of that straw poll like you did, you know, like, how many, like, what amount are you kind of feeling right now? Like, how mu- in how many questions? Um, you know, it might be that, you know, regardless of all, like, we can debate and we can talk about, you know, the different factors, how to sell it. It might be that we're all sort of in the same ballpark. And again, I don't think we'll necessarily have a full consensus on one versus two questions. But I I'm interested if we just maybe went around and and sort of spoke to that.
Can you tell me quick, Abby, what, what, how, how many millions of dollars is this? Like, eighty dollars on a, what is, what is?
Fifty million.
That's fifty million, but then where do we, okay, so then what?
I don't know, look at this. So the, the left-hand goal, eighty cents, is on a two hundred thousand dollar. But we figured the average price in Eau Claire is about, it's like a hundred and ninety-five, so we just said let's round it up to two hundred thousand. So eighty cents on a two hundred thousand dollar hole, she needs fifty dollars.
Yeah, yeah, gotcha, yeah.
Then the tax allowance, again, we're estimating based upon that previous slide that we just looked at. And then those were the dollar amounts that that equates to. So eighty cents equates to four point three million based upon our equalized value that would easily give us fifty million in debt, so we would pay the debt payments. It made up four hundred thousand left to use for operations. And so that would be right down. And so the debt for all of the fifty millions over twenty years, the ninety-two is twenty-three. Yep, and then the seventy-five, um, that one, I think, is twen- I think the only one that's odd is the ninety-two. I think that's the one that goes to the twenty-three years. Because we are, again, trying to.
Trying to structure it to get the three colors done.
We're trying to get the three colors done.
Yeah.
Can you go to the slide where you have the different tiers, suggested tiers of options?
What is? Yes.
Yep.
One thing on that one, just for Josh and Erica, because you didn't get a chance to hear about that question three, it's, isn't necessarily versus question two and three, it's not versus, you know, that question three just picks up more schools, okay? It's an alternative.
So essentially, it's the forty million second question.
Right, so a hundred and ten total. Versus question one and two gets us to that ninety-two-ish. And question one is not a eighty-two-ish. And the fifty million, we wanted you to be aware that we discussed in a referendum committee was very much like, Dr. Council said, like, not an option because we're not touching as much as what we'd like to touch.
So I think it might be helpful just to go around and and hear where people are. Like, I I think we ought to go for the ninety-two million. I'm open to discussion about one or two questions. Like, so if we do two, I think it would be ought to be structured for, like, you know, question one, question two up there. But I'd like to do ninety-two one way or the other. I I feel better about one question, but I think, you know, Lori made some good, you know, and and the, you know, there's, I'd come less away from that, even if I was, like, you know, way no the first time. And so I would, but I don't, I don't think we, I think we should do two asks if we're gonna.
I think commissioners are as part of the selling point in terms of the system plan. It would actually be, uh, in future referenda and other uh economic, we address star pieces. Those star needs that are actually like, like there, that are potentially captured in a question three.
And see, that, that makes me feel because I, yeah, I I just, I I, in, in the absence of a plan for us to come back next year or two years from now and say, these things are, these are things are still highly important to us. And, you know, we have neighboring districts that go to referendum a lot. And we're waiting every five, you know, six.
Not anymore.
Years, yeah, yeah. But so, you know, in 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 lieu of that, because this group changes. And without that plan, without a, without that commitment written down and that understanding that this is, you know, when we go out and talk to our community and and we're saying that, you know, the funding formula is broken and here is how poorly funded we are. And this is why local referenda matter and not just once, but all the time. It's a, it's, it's not an exceptional piece of our funding. It is a required piece of our funding. And that's part of just what we do as a community if we support our public schools. So in the absence of that, I don't have confidence that question three gets done. I don't feel like, like, well, I'm gonna go out and say, okay, we're just gonna leave stuff on the table. You know, I I want, I want it all. But I also understand where our community is at and the economics that we're in. And so I'm happy to support question two, but I, you know, like, up the ninety-two, you know, whatever that is, ninety-two, ninety-three.
Total.
Maybe ninety-two for simple sake, ninety-two for simple sake. But um, you know, I, I want us to be committed.
How do you feel about one question versus two questions?
I think we have to do it in one. I think it pools more people. Um, because they're gonna, as Josh said, they're gonna want to support one little thing. I just think we need to take up the extra space of the second question with all the things that we're gonna do with it. I want the tech space, not the second question. Is that possible?
I think so.
Except being first, we can't be above the city.
First, but you also want to realize that they, we want them to read the question, so it might be a strategy as well.
I'm like, I'm more of a sandwich method kind of person. It's put the good stuff in, then some bad stuff, and then some good stuff.
I would go for the ninety-two. There's a part of me that thinks we might not pass it. There's a part of me that wonders if or like, the seventy-some is, is the right number for this particular moment. Um, because the financial pressures on households are real. Um, they're, they're very, very real. Um, but I also, um, I definitely wouldn't go above the ninety-two at, under any circumstances in this particular climate, um, the conditions we find ourselves in. Even though I would like to ask for everything, um, I, I think it's, I want us to get what we can actually have. Um, and I think, you know, our students are counting on us to to thread this needle. Um, of finding the right number and the right narrative to get um as as much as we can for them in these historically difficult economic circumstances. Um, I would, I would also stay with one question. Is where I'm at.
Lori?
I've talked a lot, I think I'm gonna pass for now in here.
Well.
I'll be talking about it again on Wednesday morning, you know, I I.
Will help those of us that won't.
Oh, yeah, well, I I guess, I guess for me, like I said, I I'm, you know, I I I would feel a lot more confident, actually, uh, just with question one. Uh, because I think that actually would, it would, it would actually not be. But I, you know, I I would also be okay with uh ninety-two. I I I could be, I could be persuaded either way about uh one and two, but my uncertain, one or two questions, but my uncertainty about just question two passing and question one, like I said, I would really, just to see the schools, like, skylights, who just kind of really just bother me, right? So the o- the other, the other thing that I I also want to, and I I, I've been trying to look at some literature on this. I think if we're talking about like the mindset of a referendum, we we also have to realize, there's the reality, like, my child won't experience actually the changes that take place itself. This is like the class of, you know, so who had, who, who has elementary kid, school kids? Or the kids that, and so how do we potentially also say, to me, that's aspirational. You know, my child didn't actually get this uh, this uh, as quality of experience with these great spaces, but your child will. I support your child actually having those experiences, even though my child didn't. So tho- those are the pieces. So I, I'm, I'm at that seventy-two, ninety-two million. And like I said, I I, I I still potentially could be sold on breaking, breaking them up.
Yep.
On the amount, I think that for writing the question, we need to be really focused on the amount that's provided and not the bonding amount, right? So when we're talking ninety-two, that may or may not come to fruition depending on the assumptions that are built into the the financing. But it's bringing in between five point four million and six million dollars in that dollar to a dollar eight. And I think that for me, that's the sweet spot that I'm comfortable in. The second question, I like, but it's lukewarm for me. If if the rest of the board wants one question, then I'm more in that dollar eight. If it's two questions, that I'm in that one dollar. And, you know, the question that was rolling around in my, in in my mind was, um, that system of what you're talking about, if we're thinking aspirational, and I know that we're still really focused on this referendum, but if down the line, there's an aspirational goal that we want to look at in twenty twenty-four and it's solar panels on every building or it's um an extracurricular that will make um some of the other communities go, look at what, what Eau Claire is doing, then the community and their ability to vote on those one-off issues is really what we're doing by tying these two questions together in this one referendum. So that's kind of why I I I want to get a sweet spot where we're passing something that I feel um with, with our best efforts of 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 communicating what all of this is about. Also, it appeals widely and isn't, um, that, that, I, I, like I said in the very beginning, I I I'm more comfortable leaving money on the table and having something that's successful than I am in really reaching beyond maybe where the dad is pointing us and and then walking away from this referendum um and not having it successful because we asked for too much.
We can go back to the safe amount next year. We can go back and ask for seventy million next year if ninety-two doesn't pass. You know, I, I don't know.
Josh, do you want to, just your thoughts again on what kind of where you are leaning from, and then Lori, I'll come back to you one more time.
So what, um, can you remind me what is in that question three? Like,
Sure. Question three is, um, all of, so Memorial would get all the three remodel as well as, um,
I mean, just for, oh, three, question three.
Right.
Right. So, so what's the added on stuff? That we would be leaving on the table if we don't do that.
So like Memorial, so for example, Memorial, the seven point eight is the roof. And the commentary model, then you go over to the ten point nine for that. So there's like three point one million. Also turf and an additional ten point nine million is gonna be the auditorium and the turf. Uh, high school, North High School, the additional ten point four million is gonna be a new entrance, um, for the, um, facility and turf is gonna be the two major items. So middle school, um, is, um, skylights, I think in the media center. If I remember right, North Star's an auditorium. And then the nine point three is miscellaneous things at all of those other schools. The biggest chunk of that nine point three is, uh, four point three at Northwoods. And if we need more details, I can ask Joe and Nancy because they're here.
That's like, that must, that, that's that, that must have blue is the nine point three for those others. That like, so the one to five year need to take care of, that's what that nine point three is. So we would have those. And so then what's left, what's left for the others and the stars, the, uh, the green and the purple. So that's what, what some would perceive as the aspirational stuff, it would be nice.
Um, I mean, I think we, we should be going for at least that ninety-two, ninety-three number. I'm concerned that what's in that nine point three million on the other, because we're leaving out, what, two, four, six, eight, nine schools? It's like half of our buildings. Which I'm sure all have things.
It's about the three middles, the two highs. That's what's the, like, everybody's gonna, almost everyone's gonna follow.
Right, yep. So I, I'm, as much as I think those, um, additional dollars at Memorial and North hit some of those constituencies that feel like they've been left out, um, and because I've, have certainly heard from some of those folks who are like, you know, we, our athletic facilities haven't changed since I was in high school or, uh, embarrassed by this or that. So those are, that's some of those big numbers. But when it, when it comes to like, making sure that we have adequate academic space, that has to come first. Just, you know, at the end of the day. So as much as I would like to be able to pull in some of those other, other constituencies who probably would get motivated, um, I have a hard, I have a hard time going that far. Um, but, but that, but that other line, that bottom line nine point three million, I would really like to find a way to get that included because we're talking about just touching number of buildings and number of households. Um, and they, they may not individually be as large a projects, but like, I think that's the way we show that we're investing in all of our facilities. And I, I'm, I mean, I'm leaning towards one question. I, I think if it's, if it's gonna be a second question, then it's gotta be stuff where we're relatively comfortable not happening because I think people are, are likely to see that third question, say, you're gonna hit me again. Okay, that's, that's the stuff I can, I cannot go for. That's, that's the high menu priced item I'm, I'm gonna pass.
Lori, back to you.
So I, um, I think I'm most, well, something I'm sure of is this referendum must pass. It must. Uh, I don't, I don't, I don't see any other option. Something I'm confused about, I realized, and I think my confusion began to grow like in budget and referendum, and it's still here, is at some point we, um, kind of made this turn to enhanced co-curriculars or extracurriculars. And we even in our committee, and then we've talked about, you know, those aren't, those aren't just extras. I mean, they do sometime, they, sometimes they do often as much or even more for kids than curriculars. Um, what I feel like I've, the conversation, it didn't go in the direction is, what about the, from the survey, the support for, like, the academic support who are behind in basic skills and the mental or emotional health needs? Why is that not coming out in a question?
But it, it, it would. It's that, it's the, it's the purple that we add the specifics to. So in the opera, so in the,
I get that, but, yeah, I, um, I get that. But I've been wondering over the, since we last met, if somehow, and I, I hope I can understand it. So this turn toward curricular, co-curricular, maybe it's not all in the direction of those two areas. I, I know, I know it is, but I, I, I wonder about how we're framing it, especially if it's a two question. How is it framed for the, those areas, like mental and emotional and the skill catch-up?
To me, that falls in what's, you know, in the, in the operations. And then that's gonna be on what are, what are we putting it in? You know, like, how are, I mean, is it mental health staff? We have a, you know, like, that's, you can put more mental health staff you can put, you know, for student learning supports or smaller class size or whatever we, you know, I think that's something that's gotta come out, but.
So I, I feel unable to really say without knowing more of it.
But to be able to get the specifics to that, though, it's deciding on the amount, and then you have that two million, the two million dollars will determine actually kind of we, what that looks like. And at the same time, I think it's, I think it's the school board holding actually Superintendent Johnson and, and then the executive committee to bring us really the specifics of what, what does that two million dollars look like in meeting and meeting those particular needs? And it's, it, it can't, yeah, I guess for me, it can't just be that hiring of people.
Right.
Like, what will they, what will they do?
Sure.
How will they help students? How, how will they assist our teachers and staff, right?
This is where I'm at, like, because you called us on it. Um, I'm having trouble moving forward in my thinking because we've been so facilities focused. And I understand the role of facilities in academics and all, I understand all of that. But I'm, that's where I'm at anyway. So I'd love a chance to talk more about that next day.
So I'm gonna try to sum up what I think I just heard, and please jump in and correct me. I, I think I heard most everybody in generalized support of sort of shooting for the ninety-two million. So I think that, and I don't know what referendum committee can decide, but it sounds like we need a one question option for ninety-two million. Sounds like we need a two question option for ninety-two million. So that's like question one and two up there. And it sounds like we probably, you know, from what Mark Quell said, maybe with Lori, what you said about like this must pass. Maybe we also need a one question option for the seventy million. Where we just say, this is, we're gonna honor this. We're not gonna try for the extra and maybe accidentally peel somebody off for the cheaper one. We're just going for the seventy for now. We're gonna be back into, you know. I think that sounds like the wording, I think, you know, we haven't talked about. I think it's, and I, I, I very much agree with you, Lori, Mark Quell, like, we need work from superintendent and system leaders or the admin staff somehow about like, what are the operational pieces gonna be? You know, one thing that I think is, uh, well structured in the city's question is they're very specific about this is the positions we're gonna hire. Now, whether it's gonna, you know, you know, and maybe that's helpful to know, like, if we're hiring people, what are they gonna do? Maybe mental health staff is, is generalized enough, or maybe it's for three school counselors or whatever, or, you know, maybe it's mental health curriculum. Maybe it's, you know, to make interventionist permanent. And I think that's the job of our educational experts to say, where if we had two million dollars to spend in these two buckets every year, what would we spend it on? And we can fill those in referendum committee. Maybe you can decide on like, how general or specific do you feel good about? I think the one thing, and so if that's the generalized, does everybody feel like that's kind of the generalized feeling? Does that seem like a reasonable to that? Are there, for people that aren't on the referendum committee, are there specific wordings or feelings about wordings, right? Abby talked about the broad versus specific on the buildings. You know, like, there's the broad versus specific, maybe it's just general categories on the operations, one way or the other. I'd, I'd like to keep it broad in case we somehow get a break or, you know, like, maybe by the time we're going in twenty-four to get bids, maybe the, the feds, you know, interest rates crank up have hit, gotten inflation back down or maybe ours, you know. And maybe we can do a little bit more if we're broader. So I, I tend to lean towards broader. I think it's easier to understand. But sometimes specifics and if, you know, if it's for mental health professionals, if it's gonna be counselors or social workers, people know what those are, and that sounds good. So that's, but are there other just generalized ideas on any kind of wording things that you want the referendum committee to take in? Or Abby, as she develops it in the next couple of days or over the next couple of weeks? Sure.
I, I like specifics merely for the psychological game that Josh referenced. You know, that how do, how do we get as many people, how do we bait as many people? You know, and, and get them interested and attracted to the idea again of like, not, maybe it's not gonna affect my kid, but I know that school community and I, I, I love that school community and I want it for that school community. Um, you know, and I think if we get specific, we get, we just, it's an easier pull. Um, it's harder to say no. Um, to your point, Lori, there also wasn't a question about co-curriculars in the survey. So I think that, I think that, you know, we, we maybe are, are not seeing a hundred percent the whole, the whole picture of what the community, you know, could potentially be behind because we don't, we don't actually have a data point on that. So, you know, I, but you're, to your point about, you know, I think defining operations broadly, um, that, I, I, I don't know. I don't know how I feel about that. I, I guess I would maybe wanna see it both ways, just to see how I feel about it, because I don't know. I don't know.
There was actually, the question was instructional and extracurricular sources.
And the rush of emails that we received is how, you know, um, statements from Esther Fund.
Are there any other, like, feedback about wording for the referendum committee to take into Wednesday?
I don't know if we need to be, hit every single point of like, what's in the referendum. I think we need to hit certain things that we know are, are resonating. And, but we need to make sure that we have a webpage that shows exactly what is intended to be funded. Because, um, I think once you get into that poll, polling place, if you're part of that motivated constituency, you know how you're gonna vote when you get there. You're probably not going to turn someone on to athletics who wasn't already, once they got there. So, um, I'm, I, I wanna make sure that the, the question is, is accurate, but also concise in terms of like, we're not just gonna throw out a list of everything that's in there. But I think that list must exist and we must hit people over the head with it constantly because that's exactly what the city council is doing. And I think that's one reason why.
And they have a concise narrative. It's clear and it's specific and it's understandable. And we're asking for, for a variety of projects, capital and operations. And it's going to be challenging for us to describe that in a way that people understand at all, much less get excited about, like, and, and that's, I mean, obviously want them to get excited and to enthusiastically vote yes and tell everybody they know to do the same. I think we do have to recall that information from the presentation, that the more specific we get, the less support appears. And, and that we have to think about language in a way that communicates what the purpose is without getting bogged down in details uh, in the, the language of the question itself and, and thinking about what's going in the question. And then something completely different is the, is the narrative that we are communicating to the public in a variety of ways before they encounter that question while they're voting.
So Abby, referendum committee, are there other questions that you'd like for the board before we go into Wednesday?
I know you're very clearly a one question person.
I, I can go either way. At this point, I would rather think one's better. And I think there was enough discussion about like, I would consider it. I don't, you know, if it was the first thing that got voted on, I think I might vote against it for a chance to have it out of one. But I also, you know, it only takes four votes to move it forward. If it was, if we didn't go, if we had a chance at the one question, and then I would vote, if it didn't go, I would vote for it in the two, you know, like. For me, it's about, for me, the, the amount is more important than the number of questions, even if I have a preference.
So for the referendum committee, we really should be working on a one question option that's higher. Or a two question option that has a dollar amount that we're comfortable with and the aspiration.
Gets us to that ninety-two, yeah. And I think, I think including a, well, maybe that single question is the same either way. I don't actually know. But I think there also needs to be an option for that single question at seventy-some million. Mark Quell was saying, you know, I could, I could be okay at seventy-some million, I could be okay. And Lori was saying, you know, this is a must pass. I think we have to consider that alone. So I think that's, those are the three options I think I've heard, you know, as I kind of went through.
You, you, you use an example for ba- ba- basically, it, it, it's a frame of actually just creating actually two, one, one question pieces at ninety-two, one at seventy-three. Then potentially that what doesn't add on at twenty-something look like. And then what will end up, I think that's what, that would actually, what we would bring back is actually two single questions. How it reads at ninety-two, how it reads at seventy, seventy-two. And then if we wanted to be aspirational, it's seventy-two plus a second.
Maybe you run it through in, in pieces. Maybe it's like, I, I, we choose between one and two. And then if, if, if we took one, which is the lower one, now do we have a motion to add a question, a second question or something like that? And it's filling the purple. That's, I think, the mo- the most important thing I would like to see referendum comeback is get us wording in that purple so that we're, you know, and for the administration, get us specifics about operations to, to that level where it's not, you know, it doesn't have to be, this is exactly, you know, the books that we're going to buy or the, you know, but is it gonna be, you know, curriculum? Is it gonna be staff? Is it gonna be class size? Is it gonna be?
Or just a breakdown, hypothetical breakdown, kind of how, how you've done like the, uh, the Esther Fund allocations. How you went back and demonstrated how you did the allocations of where the money went from the twenty-six cents. So hypothetically, potentially, what does that, what does that look like? And then I would actually give us the ability to be able to provide feedback. Well, I actually don't think this is enough. And or tell me more on how this was specifically actually, uh, benefit actually students, teachers and staff. And then, and I think that's probably, um, you know, maybe do that before Wednesday morning at eight-thirty. That's why they pay.
I get an app, I guess, you know.
We, we do that simply from the meetings that we've had before. You know, how would we spend eight hundred and seventy? Because when those two questions hit, when the operations questions hit, and we saw seventy-nine, seventy-seven percent, you know, some of the public may not have children in school, but they know somebody who does. And they know that the, you know, the pandemic's coming on. Eightier with mental health, their overall issue. So, yep, eight hundred and seventy, there's also one point five, and there's also two point oh. Just because we know with the Esther funding, we don't know what's gonna happen this summer with the state budget.
All right, any, anyone, anything else last second? Here, a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.